Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. Returning from our closed session, we have an announcement. The council has unanimously selected Teresa Gallivan as our interim city administrator. Laurel's departure, and we're excited to announce that tonight. And this is one of the things we can applaud for. And with regard to the other item, we had no reportable action. And then this evening for our invocation, we have Kate Black. Kate, come on down. And if you'd all rise, please.
Good evening. This is a prayer for mankind from the Bahia writings. Oh thou kind Lord, thou hast created all humanity from the same stock. Thou hast decreed that all shall belong to the same household. In thy holy presence they are all servants, and all mankind are sheltered beneath thy tabernacle. All have gathered together at thy table of bounty; all are illumined through the light of thy providence. O God, thou art kind to all; thou hast provided for all, doth shelter all, conferest life upon all. Thou hast endowed each and all with talents and faculties, and all are submerged in the ocean of thy mercy. O thou kind Lord, unite all. Let the religions agree and make the nations one, so that they may see each other as one family, and the whole earth as one home. May they all live together in perfect harmony. O God, raise aloft the banner of the oneness of mankind. O God, establish the most great peace. Cement thou, O God, the hearts together. O thou kind Father, God, gladden our hearts through the fragrance of thy love, brighten our eyes through the light of thy guidance, delight our ears with the melody of thy word, and shelter us in the stronghold of thy providence. Thou art the mighty and powerful; thou art the forgiving, and thou art the one who overlooketh the shortcomings of all mankind.
In addition to the two that we have on here, we will also have a proclamation for the Daughters of the American Revolution. And first up this evening, we have the Library Foundation to present a check.
At a meeting that city staff had with the Library Foundation on June 25, 2013, this year, this summer, the library director advised that the Charlotte's Web project is within six to nine months of project realization. This announcement triggers for the Library Foundation the transfer to the city of all assets for the project previously received from Charlotte Benton or the Charlotte Benton Trust, and including money donated to the project earmarked Charlotte's Web project construction and operations and maintenance. So the Library Foundation is excited to make this presentation of its liquid assets. And with this check, the Library Foundation will have distributed to the city for the project over $650,000. The check, please. And Ashley Chavez, Library Director. So, please, this is a check for over $285,000. Over the years, 15 to be exact, the Foundation has been faithful to the project through four library directors, four city administrators, four project configurations, and four presidents of the Library Foundation. The Foundation has been loyal to its donors, and as responsible stewards, all grants and donations were placed in instruments that are relatively risk-free: treasuries, CDs, and money markets. So through the recent economic turbulence, none of these donations or any grant money was lost. As an entity independent of the city, the Foundation is a nonprofit corporation with lofty goals. We are building book endowments to provide sustainable funding for books and materials in all formats and in all communities that we support: the Beuthin Library, the Village Library, and Lompoc. In 2004, with a grant received from the Hutton Foundation, a Charlotte's Web book endowment was set up. Disbursements from earnings from this dedicated endowment will provide ongoing Charlotte's Web support for books and materials. As an all-volunteer board, I think they call them an AVO, All-Volunteer Organization, you can imagine the volunteer hours devoted to this project and to raise the amount of money that we have. Those who stand out have been our leaders in fundraising and grant searches, writers and planners. And I want to recognize some of them because they deserved to be named. We have had a dedicated Foundation Board of Directors, and these are just too numerous over the years to mention. We've been given direction and support by the library trustees, which of course are appointed by you, the council, and they are an administrative board as determined by the state, as Lompoc is a general law city. And those library trustees are Library Trustee Shirley Leck, Library Trustee the late Dick Deweese, and Mayor Deweese, who I believe never missed a meeting on the Charlotte's Web project. And many of them were in his office or in the administrator's office. Trustee, Library Trustee Wiki Rodenhay, Library Trustee Harry Schlotter, Library Trustee Ann Les, Library Trustee Lou Knowles, Library Trustee Al Clark. And then we have some energetic, enthusiastic, capital campaign leaders. We have the late Pat Lizaraga, who devoted so much time to the project, and she and Shirley wrote the one- or two-year-long oral history on the donor. And then with Mary Graham, they all worked on looking at hundreds and hundreds of grants. And Dorian Hodge. So, thank you. And Mayor, thank you.
As you heard, I'm Ashley Chavez, Library Director of the Lompoc Public Library System. Accepting this check on behalf of the Lompoc Library gives me great pleasure. The Lompoc District Library's Foundation has worked towards the goal of making the Charlotte's Web Children's Library a reality for many years now, and this money will help us move forward with the project. I'd like to take a brief moment and provide a quick update on the project. In 2012, after much discussion with concerned parties and the community at large, it was decided to move forward with the Charlotte's Web Children's Library in the form of a bookmobile. We are close to making this project a reality and are currently finalizing details regarding legal documents that need to be in place before we can proceed. I have been working very hard on the project and in the past months have found a consultant that can help us through the acquisition process, written and received grant monies that will be available to the project, and formed a partnership with the Lompoc Unified School District that will let the bookmobile serve students as well as lend storage to the vehicle. The money from the Foundation being presented tonight will be able to completely pay for the cost of the bookmobile, and other monies for the project that are currently being held will go towards improving the site at 211 South I Street, so it can be of great service to our community. In closing, I'd like to share a quote with all of you that I find particularly apt on a night like tonight, with the Charlotte's Web project being the recipient of such a generous gift that is the result of hard work and dedicated volunteers. It was Margaret Mead who said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." Again, my sincere thanks to everyone who has worked on the project, both present and past members. A traveling library service will change Lompoc and the community for better, and you are all very special and important piece in making that happen. So, thank you.
And Chuck, you and all your folks, come on down. No one's going to come with you. Come on, you guys, don't be bashful. He told you that I bite, didn't he? It's not true. He's the one. No, you guys are doing good things. A proclamation for National Recovery Month. Whereas behavioral health is the essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in their own area and around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance abuse disorders to implement preventive measures, recognizing the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery and support services. And whereas in 2011, 3.8 million people aged 12 and older received special treatment for substance abuse disorder, and 31.6 million adults aged 18 and older received mental health services according to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions who need help. And whereas on October 1, 2013, as a result of the Affordable Care Act, more than 11 million uninsured individuals with behavioral health issues will become eligible for affordable insurance coverage for their treatment needs. According to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health -- the comma was in the wrong place. In the mayor's brain. And that was a stat from the 2011, sorry about that. We must ensure that all of these individuals are successfully enrolled into coverage. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the Lompoc Valley Substance Abuse Treatment Centers invite all residents of Lompoc to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2013 as National Recovery Month, and call upon all residents to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies in support of Recovery Month. And most importantly, if you know someone who is having a problem and hasn't sought help yet, we have a great group of organizations and individuals in Lompoc where help is available. So don't be bashful. Step up and help your friend or family member or coworker. Step right out of here. Thank you, John. You guys are great.
I'd just like to say thank you for recognizing Recovery Day in the Park, which is our version of recognizing National Recovery Month. This is an excellent way, and it has been an excellent way for years, for us to get out information on mental health and recovery services in our community. This year has been a long-time planning and should be a great event this weekend on Saturday. And I'd like to personally thank Jen and everybody that's helped put together this event. So thank you for recognizing this, and we really appreciate it.
My name is Kevin. I'm the Director of Zona Seca, and I'm also a recovering addict alcoholic. November 17, I'll have 21 years of clean and sober because of treatment programs and people like this that helped me when I thought I couldn't help myself. I really appreciate you recognizing -- it is a whole month, September, but it's every day of your life that you live in recovery. It's one day at a time. And I really appreciate the fact that Zona Seca was asked to come here 13 years ago, just recently. And in between that and now, we have a barrage of treatment programs, and so many people have gained sobriety in that time. My biggest goal in life is something I've seen fall apart through time, and that's families. And the most important thing to me is to see families come back together again, being responsible citizens of our community, making it a safer place for all of us to live. Thank you.
Chuck forgot his commercial.
John asked me to mention, the beginning of this year, we started a local community group called the Lompoc Community Group, and it is to address areas of need in our community. This is a meeting that's open to the community. We have addressed such topics as get your kid a job, substance abuse treatment and prevention. Now we're on the next topic will be gangs in our community and how they impact our community. These meetings are held the second Tuesday of every month at New Hope Church at 6:30 p.m. So the community is invited and more than welcome to come to these. Please come and bring somebody. The only way that we can start to address the areas of need in our community is if we show up and give our time. So, thank you, John, for letting me do my commercial.
And Chuck's pretty modest because he really pulled that together, and it's been a great opportunity for a lot of different providers to come in and go, hey, I've got this problem. Oh, we have that solution. So, it's been great. And now, a different type of pollution. National Pollution Week. National Pollution Prevention Week. September 15 to the 21st. And in the lobby, we have a plethora of pollution prevention devices. Whereas the City of Lompoc supports a clean and safe environment for its residents, and whereas pollution prevention is an approach to environmental protection that focuses on source reduction and is thereby the preferred strategy for protecting our environment, and whereas by focusing attention on pollution prevention, the City of Lompoc will meet the challenges of the next century for economic competitiveness and environmental protection. And whereas Pollution Prevention Week is an opportunity for government, industry, and environmental organizations to recognize the potential of preventing and to work together to plan for a prosperous and sustainable future. Now therefore, I name September 15 to 21 as Pollution Prevention Week.
The City of Lompoc Solid Waste Division has participated in Pollution Prevention Week, or P2 Week, as we call it in the industry, for several years. As the mayor mentioned, Sunday, September 15 through Saturday, September 21 is this year's event. The Solid Waste Division has our promotional display in the lobby. We have oil drain pans, funnels, oil filter carriers for you to take the material from your home to the oil collection tanks that we have located around town. They're open 24/7, unmanned. They're 400-gallon tanks that we have. We have a lot of other things out there for you. We have recycling coloring books and the Resource Recycling Guide that's got a lot of information about the entire Santa Barbara County in there, pins, a lot of other great things out there. We also have, we're going to give away five free backyard composting bins. There's one on display out there. You just sign your name and a phone number that we can reach you and drop it in the little box. We do also subsidize them. If you don't win one, we have them available for $22. We subsidize half through the Solid Waste Division. You can pick them up at the Solid Waste Office. If you're a resident of the City of Lompoc, you can just verify proof of resident, and we can attach that fee to your city bill. We will be at Farmer's Market on Friday night from 2 to 6 p.m. with all of these items, as well as our tote bags that are made out of recycled water bottles. Thank you very much.
Claudia, I just want to confirm really quick. Everything that's on display out there currently, except for the composting bin, is free for citizens to take?
Yes. And like I said, we have the funnels, we have all those things also available at the Solid Waste Office anytime that we're open, Monday through Friday, from 7:30 to 4:00. When you purchase oil, you pay like a little surcharge fee. We get that money back through the city, through a block grant system. That pays for our oil collection tanks and then all this promotional -- oh, boy. There's a list. There's one at the airport, there's one at the landfill, there's one at the solid waste yard, there's one at Napa, one at Perry's, one at the corporate yard. How am I doing? I think that's it. Thank you very much.
So there's no excuse to let one drop of used oil hit the ground unless you're under the car and it falls on you. The oil, not the car. Okay. And now we have a proclamation for Constitution Week, and we have the Daughters of the American Whereas September 17, 2013 marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim in Lompoc September 17 to 2013 to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution from 1787. And I think personally that it's amazing that a document drafted in 1787 is still extremely relevant today. They were very foresighted people.
We would also like to present you with a copy of the Constitution, and I've already presented the board with our little Constitution Week pin, which is September 17 through the 23rd. And it's ironic that you mentioned the fact we've had it this long. I was out at Manzanita School with the fifth graders today talking about the Constitution, and that there were only 13 states, and there were only 55 votes. Some states only had six, some had nine, and some had 39. And to think that we today have this small document, only a few pages long, that we still follow. Thank you. And this is Sue Hughesman with me, my vice regent, and I'm Nancy Thompson. And educate your kids. Thanks.
Seems to me an awfully long time ago in junior high school. I got one that looked just like that from the DAR. Okay. Now, we will have a update from Habitat for Humanity on their project at 308 North K Street. Come on down.
My name is Richard Brown. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity in northern Santa Barbara County. Mr. Mayor, Councilpeople, thank you for your time this evening. Since our last meeting, we have devoted 100% of our effort to responding to requests from the Planning Department as far as plan checks are concerned. We follow all this process through our architect, David Goldstein out of Solvang, is our primary And we use Chuck, Mr. Dixon here in Lompoc for engineering services. And we've had to acquire the services of several other architects that because the process requires that we use architects for irrigation and landscaping and for the structural work. That goes beyond David Goldstein's process. So all those plan check items were completed and turned into the city yesterday. I personally picked everything up from David Goldstein and brought it in. There is only one thing, one part of the project that's not completed, and that is the CCNRs are not completed. Our attorney has not completed the draft work of that. So, that's at the top of our list to get finished, but we wanted you to know that we were attempting to get done.
Good. Are there any questions this time? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down, sharing with us, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the city administrator's status report.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and community audience, while there are no status items to report tonight, I do have a couple of announcements to make. And first, I announce that Fire Chief Ladapal and our Lompoc Fire Department invite the Lompoc community to their open house Saturday, October 5, between 10 and 2 p.m. at Fire Station 1, 115 South G Street. There will be many activities throughout the day that will allow visitors to meet firefighters, participate in interactive and informative stations, take a station tour, and learn about fire safety. The open house involves many partners, including the Lompoc Firefighters Foundation, AMR, Sansom Clinic, Lompoc Forestry Church, Home Depot, Healthy Lompoc, PG&E, New Life Christian Academy, Listos, Lompoc Police Department, and the County Public Health Department. So please come on out and enjoy the day at the Lompoc Fire Department Open House on October 5. The time is between 10 a.m. and 2 p.m. Saturday, the 5th. This next announcement is more difficult to make, and I am saddened to share that retired former Lompoc City Clerk Maureen Bosking passed away last week. Maureen retired from the city in 1999, and many of us knew her both professionally and personally. I was privileged to have worked for Maureen in the mid-'90s, up until she retired, and I can share that she was a beautiful person, and she will be greatly missed. We extend our sincere condolences to Maureen's son. We extend our sincere condolences to Maureen's sons, Steve, daughter-in-law Jenny, her grandchildren, Gunner and Anna Bosking, and the Bosking family, and we pray God's peace for her family and friends at this difficult time. Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else to announce tonight. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's your report, but I'm going to throw one in. We were happy to report today that the folks from Applebee's came by, and they will be opening along about the 30th, I think. I didn't get, I missed seeing them, but I think they're going to open about the 30th of this month over in the former Hollywood Video location in front of Walmart. So they're putting in stock right now, and the party will begin soon. Do we have any staff requests and announcements? Nope? Okay. Okay, oral communications. This is your opportunity to spend five minutes talking to us about any subject. If you are here for something that's further down the agenda and you could stay, it's better if you talk about it then because we'll remember it better. But if you can't stay or you have something else, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. Members of the council, my name's Butch Browder. Excuse me while I get organized here. I am angry and upset. We have today lost three Italian stone pine trees on South H Street in three weeks. Someone decided that these trees were not worth saving. I suspect that no one sought to evaluate any method of trying to save them or to seek a second opinion regarding the course of action. Only the knee-jerk reaction to take out the chainsaws and start cutting them down. I'm not a tree expert, but these trees, in my view, seemed healthy, with tall, straight trunks, and they did not look to me to be in any danger of imminent collapse. I could be wrong. Like I said, I'm not an expert. Who is making these life and death decisions for these trees? Which tree is next?
Hey, Butch, can we tell you about it? Or do you want to finish up? I can tell you how we got where we are.
I'd like to finish.
Okay.
A few years back during a tour of the Stone Pine Grove, Ms. McCall, who was at the time the tree maven, if I can call her that, Ms. McCall and I discussed the feasibility of replacing trees that had been removed at that time. Then only a couple had succumbed to the acts. She assured me that the city had contracted with a nursery source for replacement trees of the same type at about $2,500, if my memory serves me, for each replacement tree, and that the ones that were taken out would be replaced within a few months. This was quite a few years back. These replacement trees were to be 10 to 20-foot trees in containers guaranteed to survive the transplantation and succeed. To date, 10 trees have been removed from the original 60, because in my opinion, they were not properly maintained. Only one has been replaced. That one is healthy, happy, and vital in the middle of the 200 block, South H. We can only surmise whether any of those others could have been saved by structural evaluation and proper bracing and support. The Italian Stone Pine Grove, as you know, on South H Street is a community treasure, and each and every tree there is part of that treasure. People from all over the world know of this grove of trees, and it is one of the main attractions in our town. Visitors make it a point to visit the South H Street trees and take home pictures as a reminder of their beauty. I've admired these trees since I first came to Lompoc over 50 years ago, and I have two of them in the parkway in front of my house. I have three more of my own that were planted by a previous owner, growing elsewhere on the property. Two full grown and one a baby. I'm asking that the council make a firm commitment, formalized by resolution, to preserve the grove and take the management of it out of the hands of the arborist, who in my opinion is too quick to remove a tree. The grove is a valuable asset to the city and should be treated as such, and each time a tree is removed, the value is diminished. I suggest that the city subcontract the evaluation of the trees to a structural engineer who knows about bracing, supports, and structural things, and who can suggest methods of supporting the large limbs and trunks in such a way that the trees support their own weight and protect them and the public from danger without destroying the thing we want to protect, preserve, and save. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just kind of, let me recap so everyone understands. And several years ago, we had an arborist who was a specialist come through and look at the trees and recommended some thinning, which was performed at that time. And we felt based on that, we had gained some years through the process. And then you'll recall about three months ago, one fell on a truck and kind of crushed it like a bug. And the concern was then, do we have other trees that are in imminent failure, and what needs to be done with those, and then to review the pruning program and see what needs to be done there. So again, we contacted a specialist who's very knowledgeable in stone pines, and he came and did a review of all the trees. And of those, three were found to be imminently unsafe, and those were the three that were removed, and the others were found to be in good condition but needing some trimming. We have just actually yesterday talked about the replanting program that kind of fell behind for the lack of funds because again, it's $2,500 a tree, as you're aware. It might be a little more now. And that's for a four-by-four box tree that's about 15 to 20 feet high. And so in the recent past, because of the difficult economy, there just wasn't the money to do it, but that's now being readdressed particularly because we've had, we've lost quite a number of trees over the last two years. It's been a really bad time for our favorite trees. So, you know, it's being worked on, and none of these trees were taken out without a great deal of consideration. And I don't think that wasn't very well covered outside of the city circle, so.
I understand that.
Okay.
My only question would be, the tree that fell on the truck, could that have been saved if it had been structurally evaluated and propped up and strengthened and somehow...
I'm sure that everyone could be saved, but then again, there's an issue of cost, so, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Duane. Go ahead.
Yeah, Alonzo, I'm glad, I seen you the other day. Told you to come here and bring your presentation. I think it's excellent. The one thing that I'm very discouraged on is the article we had in the Beautification and Appearance Commission meeting. Had an excellent job explaining what about the trees. The only thing is, the people who live on South H didn't have that information. They're going to have to have a meeting with all the homeowners and landowners in that area and let them know what the score is. You just can't keep hiding it here at city.
I'll mention that to my beautification commissioner, maybe the rest of us can too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Barcelona, I have a question. Were some of the, I was aware that some of the homeowners were notified of this, but maybe not perhaps not all on that corridor. Is that correct?
That is correct. There were some that notified that were directly...
Adjacent to the trees.
Good evening. I'm Wiki Rodenhye, former library board of trustee member. I wanted to mention before inviting that I am thrilled that we are seeing the money come in destined for the Charlotte Webb Project. To see some movement in this project after so many years is really exciting, and to hear that the South I Street site will be used also is a relief. And then the reason why I really came up was to invite everyone to partake in some cookies in celebration of the delivery of that big check that the Library Foundation gave the city. Thank you.
Perfect. Not quite. We're going to finish oral communications. So here's the motivation. If you don't stand up and come to the microphone, we get to have cookies right now. Is there anyone else that wants to speak and be pummeled by the entire room? Seeing no one wishing to rise or be pummeled, we, oral communications is hereby closed and cookies are hereby opened for 10 minutes. Okay. Next, we will consider the consent calendar. And item one, we have the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting of May 21 and September 3, so two of them. Item two, we have approval expenditures. Payroll for 1.2 million, a voucher register for $46,000, a voucher register for $4.8 million, a voucher register for $592,000, and credit refunds of $1,486. And I will abstain from check 315090 to Lompoc Lock &amp; Safe for $77.23. And item number three, physical year 1314 agreement for operation of the countywide library system. Item four, conditional use permit CUP 12-12 summary of action, uphold the appeal of Valley Haven Senior Daycare Center, and modify conditions of approval, planning commission, planning division file CUP 12-12. And that is all. Is there any item on the consent calendar a council member would like to pull? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
I'll move we accept a consent calendar.
And is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That pass was 5-0. Thank you. And now we're moving to item number five, the consideration of a planning commission recommendation to approve text amendment to the city zoning ordinance to amend Chapter 17.136 of the, for home occupation permits to include provisions for cottage food operator permits. Lucille?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. The planning commission had held a public hearing on August 14th to consider the cottage food industry text amendment. This was a bill that was passed by the state last year, the end of 2012, and became effective January 1st of 2013. The city was to update the housing, or the home use permit to simplify the process for any applicants who chose to take advantage of this particular ability. And what we've done is we've gone into our home use permit and provided a section where a cottage food operator can obtain a permit based on certain criteria as listed in our ordinance. The information that we request from the applicant includes information on the location, how much of the actual area is being utilized to support the industry, the actual work that's being done, and the parking. It's important to note that these operators are allowed to have employees. A single employee is allowed. However, they are also allowed to have members of their family and household members, be as employees. So it's been brought up that there might be a little confusion in our ordinance. If the council could look at page three of seven on the actual ordinance. This is an area where the state allows the city to have some requirements, just guidelines for the applicant, and parking and loading requirements are something that we have listed here, requiring parking be provided, either the garage or the driveway, for any employees. And that might be not as clear as we hoped it was, so we may want to add the language including family and/or household members to that statement. So that is addressed in the rest of the ordinance, and this would just make this section consistent with the rest of the ordinance. So that would be our suggestion. Additionally, when the planning commission, I'm sorry...
Where do you want to insert those words? I'm sorry.
Right after the fourth line down.
Okay.
It says, "If employees, including family and household members..."
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
The planning commission reviewed the submittal forms, which we have on our website, and the application. We currently charge a fee of $92.80 for a home use permit, and we would continue to charge that same fee for this type of a permit. It would be issued by the zoning administrator, and we anticipate that fee would amply cover the staff time. The operator needs to work with the county of Santa Barbara to obtain a permit from them first, and then they would come to the city to obtain the second permit. We have included the information from the county, the county website, and all of the information that is provided to the operator. There are classes that are required to be taken, so the state is, and through the county, controlling how the operator works with the business to ensure the food safety. And the city is then just working on the location, the land use, noise, the placement, that type of thing. So those are the things that we are allowed to regulate. And we have included the planning commission staff report in the minutes and the resolution that was adopted. The planning commission did vote for 01 with Commissioner Chione absent to recommend that the council adopt the resolution and move this forward so that we can offer this permit to our citizens. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions this time? Councilor Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you for bringing this forward. I think that this is a great opportunity for our citizens to utilize. I appreciate you doing this very quickly, so this is fantastic. My one question is, what's the difference between a home occupation permit and a home use permit?
They're the same. They're just interchangeable.
So I'm wondering if we should make that, I don't know how much work that would be, but to make that consistent throughout the ordinance, because it says home occupation permits, which is Chapter 17.136, but we refer to it as a H U P, so without knowing that it is the same thing and only seeing the acronym, there might be some confusion.
We would just, I believe the title on the, on the ordinance, we can certainly say home use as opposed to home occupation.
Either way, doesn't matter to me. I would just say as long as the title is consistent with the language throughout, is consistent with the... consistent with the acronym we use for the permit, that would be what I'd be looking for. Thank you.
City Attorney, do you have a thought on that?
What I will take is the direction from the council that you want us to make it consistent, so when the -- if you choose to introduce the ordinance tonight, we'll take the direction that's introduced with that change as well as the change that was suggested by -- Ms. Bries?
Do you have a preference of between the two words?
No.
Okay, you get to pick. Pick one.
Whatever's easier. It looks like home occupation permit is what's used throughout. I don't know if it was just in the agenda that H-U-P was referenced.
H-U-P is the standard way that is referred to, both at the staff level when working with applicants, and I think that's the more generalized way to deal with it. So, we would prefer a home use permit.
That would be great. I agree. Whatever's easier for you.
Okay, so we'll change that all the way through, assuming we approve this. Okay. Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you for the moment. Okay, now I'm going to open the public hearing. Who is here that would like to talk to us about this?
Mayor, city council members, staff, and community, thank you for taking the time and attention to this matter. My name's General Osborne, and I'm the vice chair of the Economic Development Committee. With national politics and policy paralyzed at the national level, and states competing with each other to attract businesses, the local, or local for movement seen in music, food, and art is the same opportunity for social and economic policy change as cities solve their own problems. Cities are the new pioneers of the needed change in American public policy, and this is one of those that we embrace heartily. The Economic Development Committee sees that this amendment allowing cottage food operations in Lompoc empowers our citizens to start these businesses, increasing business and sales tax, creating jobs, and providing new and interesting products for our community and beyond. Here are a few examples of the potential that Lompoc may have. Amy's Frozen Foods started out as a shoestring operation on their California kitchen table making vegan pot pies in 1987, and has now grown into a multimillion dollar business employing over 1,400 people. Kim and Scott Holstein designed it to launch their gourmet pretzel business in 1995 out of their Chicago studio apartment. Their pretzels are now sold in Barnes &amp; Noble's coffee shops, Sam's Clubs, Whole Foods, Albertsons, and QVC Network. Jim Cook of Sam Adams Boston Lager started brewing his beer in his kitchen in 1984 and going from bar to bar to solicit for those distributions. By 2011, his company employed 800 people and produced over 32 beer styles, topping half a million annually. So, let's think about that. If just a few of 30 people in town come in and get a cottage food operation and potentially make that first-year 2013 rule of 35K allowed employing one person, you've now employed 60 people and provided additional sales and income packs to the community. The ruling allows the max of 45K gross sales, and in 2015, for 50K in gross sales. These cottage food businesses buy raw supplies to bake their goods, make their nut mixes, spice mixes, or jams, and therefore pass on to local businesses that profit as well. These provides new and interesting products to our public to shop and buy at local retail and farmers markets because of the structure allowing them to sell directly to the public, depending on their license, or through retail outlets. And finally, the hope is that a number of these businesses outgrow being a home-based business, need a commercial kitchen, need additional employees, and open a storefront to sell extra products in their line. And that is the huge hope that we have encouraged our community to pull itself up on its own and provide businesses that grow within the community and provide products that can't be necessarily farmed out somewhere else because they're produced locally and are interesting products that are made in-house and are tasty and interesting. A quick internet research reveals that barbecue sauces, condiments, and seasoning industry has a U.S. sales of 14 billion and grows at 3% to 4% per year. And I know that this was motivated by a resident and her husband's spice mixture. So, that's already a step in the right direction. The Economic Development Committee would also like to recommend to the council to request staff to regularly report on what businesses have applied for and received these cottage food operator permits. We would suggest council invite these businesses to present to council reports on their business. What is it they are producing? Where is it being sold? And how is it affecting them and the local community? Along with the city, we would recommend the chamber promote these businesses in their weekly emails, whether or not they are members. And in addition to the local business columns already included in the Lompoc record, we would love to see regular feature articles and reports on these types of businesses and how they are affecting the community. Again, the Economic Development Committee fully supports this amendment and allowing cottage food operations in Lompoc and asks the council to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dulcie Cent, thank you, Mayor, and council members, for an opportunity to speak on this issue. As a cottage food operated licensed person with the county, I'm glad to see that we're stepping up and we're getting it taken care of here in the city as well. I just wanted to mention, you know, actually, when you ju -- I'm sorry, Councilmember Costa, when you asked for the consistency here, my understanding is that the home use permit would also extend to non-food items. So, the cottage food operator, CFO, is consistent with the state and the county, how they describe people who are using their home kitchens for making food. And other people could be using their homes to make candles, or soaps, or something like that in edible, and that would be, I think, another set of rules that might have to be looked at. I just wanted to mention that and to say that, you know, the rules that have come down on this, most states, I sent off, for those of you who don't know, I'm the president of the Cha Cha Cooking Club, and I sent off for a book several years ago about how to have a home-based baking business, before I realized California would not allow me to bake in my own home and sell it. You know, the majority of the other states do allow this type of commerce to go on in their communities. So, I'm really pleased to see that. I'm excited about the people I'm connecting with in the community who are artisan food makers in their homes, and I'm really looking forward to expand a great deal. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Katie Rounds, and I'm the troublemaker. I'm the owner of Katie's Cottage Company, and I would like the city council to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to allow cottage food operations in the city of Lompoc. It's the perfect opportunity for me and for people like me to start a business that will lead to a larger, successful operation, creating jobs in Lompoc. So, both San Luis Obispo and Ventura Counties are on board with the county of Santa Barbara, and both Santa Maria and Santa Barbara allow the cottage food industry, and I would like Lompoc to be on board as well. And if I need to bribe, I do have samples. And I'd be happy to distribute after your vote. So, thank you.
Well, the cookies were good. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications, and I want to say that Larry, and I can't think of his last name sitting here, from the county health department, is the driving force behind bringing this forward in Santa Barbara County, and to say he's excited would be a gross understatement. So, if you're contemplating doing this, the county has a whole bunch of stuff to help you, and they -- so, I'm just going to read a couple lines from it because he asked me a long time ago, and we got around to this to read it, and he highlighted it in yellow. "So, the new law does not extend to products containing meat or dairy, but it does allow baked goods, granola, trail mix, popcorn, candies, dried fruit, coffee, tea, jams, jellies, vinegar, mustard, pickles, and other low-risk items." So, if you have something that isn't exactly on the list, I have Larry's number, and I know he would be delighted to talk to you. And it is my understanding that there are 13 folks in Lompoc, 12 plus you, Katie, who are ready to go forward with this with open arms. And personally, I've been suggesting to the co-op folks that the next thing we might need here is a co-op for all the people in town who make a product, because we could all get together. That would be good. Any questions or discussion from the council? This is a -- nope. Okay. No, I'm going to get to make a motion. Come on, you guys, it's my turn. Please. All right. I want to move the staff recommendation as amended. Joey, no, I shouldn't say that. Did you have anything on the item on page seven, or was that okay? Number eight on seven?
You mean page six.
I'm sorry, six. Six of seven, item eight.
For a clarification, you may want to add, there's a reference there to what a third-party retailer can do and sell and have the item that's purchased from the third-party retailer consumed on the premises. The intent was to be the premises of a third-party retailer. So, adding of the third-party retailer would be a good idea on number eight on page six, right before the parentheses.
Okay. So, with those three changes, the one earlier involving the parking, the consistency of the naming, if that is required, and the change that Joe just recommended for page six, item eight, I hereby move the staff recommendation, and would look for a second.
I'm glad to second it, but also, I'm real pleased to see this happen because there has been people in town doing this, even though the laws didn't allow them to do it, and they were doing it. And it is a way for new businesses to start, and once they start at the back door, they may move up to another facility. So, it's an excellent idea. I'm glad everybody's looking at it. We've been looking at this for about 20, 30 years and finally got it done.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0, thank you. Yeah, go for it. Okay. And now, under council request, we have supplemental information report regarding AB 1600 development impact fees from our management services director, Brad Wilkie.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'd like to make a -- I'd like to point out a couple items here. The item was brought to you under this item is actually two different items. One is the regulatory required every year reporting that has to occur under Government Code 66006, and I'd like to go through that first. It's not mentioned on the agenda to be accepted, but all you have to do is accept this on annual basis. And having said that, the annual compliance report basically provides information about all of our various impact fees. We have 12 different attachments to the report that discuss in detail each of the 12 impact fees. It asks the SB 1293 requires us to tell you and the audience what the beginning cash balances are, how much was collected during the year, how much was used during the year, how much interest was earned on the balances, and then they give a brief explanation of what, if anything, was spent, what it was spent on. And that's all provided in the attachments, one through 12. That allows us to continue holding the fees until such time that we decide to spend it through the budgeting process. In the report, it identifies what our ending balances are for each of the 12 different fees. One is zero because it's used during the same year that it's collected, the refuse fees. A couple are negative because we've actually spent the money upfront, and we're collecting the impact fees to pay it back, and that's primarily for water and wastewater. The other ones have had varying levels of activity this year and in past years, and the ending balances for each of them are shown on the report. Typically, this is a item that's presented as part of the consent agenda, but because of the request that was made at the last meeting, I added the supplement, which is attachment 13, which I'll go into in a moment. But the first thing I'd like to do is if you have any questions on the actual required report, or any of the individual activities that are on any of those attachments, I'd like to kind of get that out of the way first.
Anyone have a question at this time? Bob? Sorry, couldn't see you. Okay. Move forward, please.
Would this be a good time to make a motion to accept this report to satisfy the government subsection code?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, I'll move that we receive this report prepared to satisfy Government Code Subsection 66006, parentheses B1, and review the supplemental information here.
And a second.
Thank you for that.
You know, one problem, we didn't have a public comment, so we'll have a motion in a second.
Does it have to?
It's okay. We don't have to have public comment. Okay. So, any questions? Seeing none, vote. That passes 5-0, thank you. Yes? Yes.
One thing I'd like to mention is the report that we just -- that you just accepted is typically due by the end of the year, which is six months after the end of the fiscal year. Because of the requirements to have it brought to the council ahead of time, three meetings ahead of time, I had already started working on this at the time that Councilmember Starbuck asked for some supplemental information, so I kind of tied the two together just because it seemed to make a lot of sense. The supplemental information report that was attachment 13 kind of backs up a little bit and provides a more of an overview of what the impact fees were for. In the instances where there's specific projects that are supposed to be funded by the impact fees, I mention those. And one of the largest items is for our street impact fee, which is currently suspended. There are three major projects that are part of that, and they add up to approximately $70 million. The, over the lifetime of the collection of the AB 1600 fees, which is roughly the timeframe of our 1997 general plan, we're expected to collect approximately $23 million for those improvements. Obviously, the rest of it would have to come from somewhere else because they're not attributable to new development. And that leads me into another observation that I made. AB 1600 was a legislative item that was passed, not for our benefit, but for the development community's benefit, to allow them to have consistent, straightforward methods of having fees charged against them wherever they are. So, in the past, before AB 1600 happened, some cities charged a lot, some cities charged nothing. You still don't, you don't have to charge anything now, but AB 1600 provided a level playing field for how to charge new development. Because of that, it was crafted from the point of view of the developer, so it's limits our ability to charge new development unless there's a nexus for that development needing the required improvements. So, and there are some instances in our fee schedule where we're collecting monies just because of the per capita increase we're expecting because of the general plan. There are other fees that we have that are based on that same concept, but they are actually itemized specific projects. And for the traffic signal fees, that's a very specific list of traffic signals that are going to be paid for by impact fees. It identifies which intersections are required, and the dollar method was expected to be collected to pay for those. Other fees, for instance, the bikeways fee, is just based on what the general plan expected us to increase population-wise and allocated a certain amount of the cost of the bikeways based on that per capita increase. So, it's really just a, there's no specific projects that are identified. It's just the baseline that we need for bikeways is X, we're going to get this many more people, so those houses are going to be charged for the bikeways at that certain rate.
Mr. Wilkie, while we're on this train of thought right here, could you explain, there's a big perception that fire and police, the impact fees are very low, we need to increase the impact fees. Could you explain how that per capita works with them also?
Sure. I actually, if you forgive me, I'm going to read right out of some of the executive summaries. summaries. The executive summary has identified some of the reasons for how the impact fees are calculated. And for the police facilities and equipment, it talks about, the calculated fee covers the cost of police facilities and equipment. The city plans to expand the existing police station, and remember, this is back in 2003. But that expansion does not correlate directly with the need of new development. So what that's saying is that we have a need for increase in the capacity of the police station, but that's not because of new development. It's because of existing development and undersized. Because of that, we had listed in the impact fee study approximately $6 million of improvements, a vast majority of that cannot be charged off to new development under the regulation of AB-1600. So the impact fee study talks about the need to expand the police station, but it also limits the ability for us to charge that full amount of the expansion to new development because it provides services for existing development. And in the same vein, for the fire protection facilities and equipment category, that covers the cost of fire protection facilities and equipment. As with the police facilities, impact fees for fire protection facilities were calculated with a buy-in basis, which is basically looking at the new development as a per capita basis compared to how many people we have now. And it used the cost of fire station number one, all existing vehicles, apparatus, and relocation of station two. The total cost of these assets was allocated to both existing and future development. So again, the impact fee study recognized that we will eventually need to have fire station number two moved, but the nexus, again, was primarily on the need to rearrange where it is, not just because of new development. And looking at it from a different point of view, there's been some discussions about the parkland acquisition and improvements fee. The projects, again, there's no specific projects that are identified in the impact fee study, but the vast majority of the projects that are going to be put together for, in the future, are almost entirely due to new development. So for the parkland acquisition, the expected revenues through the life of the AB-1600 fees from new developments, about $12.9 million. And that represents about 95% of the expected cost that we need to incur over that timeframe for all parkland and improvements. So that's a very large component attributable to new development. Contrasting that, the fire protection facilities, which includes relocation of fire station two apparatus, the expectation is we're going to collect about $425,000, which is only about 7% of the total cost that was known at the time of the impact fee study attributable to new development. So that right there is really the big difference, is that the fee study using the AB-1600 methodology could only assign about 7% of the cost of improvements for fire to new development. Yet with parkland, it's closer to 95%. With the police facilities, the expectation is we'll receive about $720,000. And these numbers I'm quoting are from the fee study, so it's in 2003. Everything we've collected since then has been incremented based on our construction cost index. So each year, the amounts go up incrementally to keep track with inflation. But that $720,000 that was anticipated for fire, for police facilities, was only about 11% of the total need of police infrastructure improvements. So from my point of view, that's the real big difference, is we see the need to have the improvements for the fire station, moving station number two to a more appropriate location, increase in capacity of the police station. But what is attributable to new development because of the regulations under AB-1600 is a fairly small component. The other fees have varying degrees of new and old. The street impact fees is about 44% attributable to new development. And the traffic signals is almost 75%. Library facilities is 20%. And the water is actually about 13%. And wastewater is only about 3.7%. I think that helps explain a little bit about how the relative fees for each of the components was developed to start with. And if we would like to go down the line of beginning the process to get a new fee study, because it's now 10 years since we did the first one, the original timeline for the impact fee study, it was, it's, the study itself is dated November 5, 2003. If you back up, it's based on our capital improvement plan. That's dated December 17, 2002, which is about a year ahead of time. And that was predicated on what was in our general plan from 1997. So the process for getting to the point of having our development impact fee study presented and accepted by the council was really almost a six-year process, beginning with the adoption of the general plan in 1997, going through the steps of planning for and designing the wastewater plant, which is a large, very large component of the capital improvement plan at that point in time. And then getting to the point where we could provide that to the consultant for the impact fee study to make sure that what the fees were that we set were in compliance with AB-1600 set, we wouldn't get a developer that would be challenging what the fees are. And ultimately, that's what we want to make sure of, is that our fees are accorded in AB-1600, so we don't have a challenge. And that's getting back to the report that you just accepted, having that and your report to provide information about where we're at protects us from having to give that money back because of not being used, because we have some fairly long timeframes for using it. The, the street impact fees are being collected over 30 years for things that might happen in 30 years. So we're going to have to collect it over a very long period of time before we can start doing some of the projects.
Mr. Wilkie, you might want to, at this time, it'd be where we would mention that if it took us six years to approve a new impact fee structure, any project that comes in and gets approved will go under the old rates.
Yeah, we have, we actually have, in talking with the planning department, we actually have roughly 800, 850 lots that are part of subdivision maps that have already been approved. They, at some point in time, they will either drop off because they expire, or the, I'm sure the developer would like to get them built. And those are, those 800-plus units would be subject to the impact fees that were in place at the time that their map was accepted. So if somebody had a map for 40 units accepted in 2008, our 2008 fee structure would apply. So it would, once we use up that 800 inventory, then the, the new impact fees, if we have any in place, would start being applied. So it's, your guess is as good as mine how long it will take to use up that 800 unit inventory. And I'm sure there'll be other new developments that come online that could be subject to a new set of rules. You're right, six years is a long time, and we do have some things that are on the horizon that we have already got in place on the priority list, one of which is our general fee study that will look at all of our operational fees that would be for counter items, things that people come in day in and day out that are unrelated to development, that would have a significant impact on our fee collections for the general fund and for other funds. That right now is one of the priorities that was part of the budget to get done and in place by the end of the 2015 budget cycle. So it's a long-term process, and there's a lot to it. I could not find out how long it took to get the 15-year capital improvement plan put together, but the staff report that presented to the council said several months. I don't know if that means two years or, but it's probably going to be a significantly long period of time because everybody, all the divisions in the city will have to provide their updated information for probably a 10, maybe even a 20-year timeframe for some of the utilities that have large infrastructure needs. I guess one thing I didn't mention was that, one of the, one of the discussions here was, we were talking about it in, somewhere in 2009, 2010, for economic development purposes, the street fee was temporarily suspended. And that suspension was continued with another resolution, and it's currently in suspension right now until the next portion of the general fund, general plan update is completed for the circulation element. If the council decides they want to change that earlier, that's, it just takes some time to get the proper resolution together and you can make that change.
Funny, we'd talk about that. What I'd like to propose on that is, well, first off, since it's up for discussion right now, is I think it would be time to start our capital improvement program. I mean, you know, obviously you have your fee collection resolutions and some other things, but immediately, we should probably start down the road to get this done. The, the street impact fee, I'm just going to read two numbers here. The one we're currently waiving per unit, single-family dwelling is $4,667. It's an identified, it's the most expensive impact fee that we incur on a developer right now. It's one also that we're going to need the money to use later on. I'd like to go ahead and waive our second-largest impact fee, which is the parkland acquisition, $4,066. It's a $600 less impact fee, but it would still offer a pretty nice carrot for a developer to waive that. If they needed a park, the developer could provide a park. We could go under the Quimby with this. There's several options here. As a city, we know we're 100-plus acres overbuilt on parks now. We're not going to acquire any, so I don't, this would be the smart impact fee if we wanted to continue to put a carrot out there for developers, to waive our parkland acquisition and reinstate the street impact fee. It's, to me, it's pretty much a common sense no-brainer there.
Well, let me say that I probably wouldn't necessarily agree with you on that because I think one of the things that we are in desperate need of is a sports complex here in Long Po for softball and baseball and those sort of things. And we've spent a fair amount of time looking into that, and the economic development committee did too. And that will require the acquisition of a fair amount of land. The other side is, and, and, you know, maybe, maybe there's some middle ground with regard to the traffic fee. And I think, if my memory is correct, and Brad, you can jump right in, I think the traffic impact fee had to do with improving O Street and the Central Avenue Bridge and the traffic impact fee. I'm sorry, tree. Yeah, I don't remember. Go, jump in.
I extracted out of the impact fee study itself, the, the three projects that are, make up the traffic or street impact fee. They include the east-west river crossing at $26 million estimated cost, the, a north H Street capacity improvement at $22 million, and a north-south Arturo widening at $37 million. The first two are attributable to new development at a 40% level, so four out of $10 would come from new development, and the other six would come from existing resources. The north-south Arturo widening is 100% attributable to new development. So that, that entire amount would be collected from new development to build another north-south corridor like H Street.
In the, in the signal impact fees, weren't the intersections identified on O, on O Street?
There are several that are identified on O Street.
So I think the intent was that that would be the new north, north-south one, but, you know.
But, like you say, the intent, but in, you know, the common sense world, if we're going to go down the, that road, it, it would make more sense to make V, which we already own three acres that we have to maintain, to the east side of V for the expansion, so, you know, I mean, it would be very easy to swap from O to V straight for your major north-south on this.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Backing up one more step, the, on the actual compliance report that was accepted a couple minutes ago, the, the parkland impact fee, which is attachment number five, shows that we had at the beginning of the year about $593,000. We did not collect any fees under that fee schedule during the year, and so we ended up with about $593,000 after some interest. The reason we didn't collect any fees under that schedule is it's a offset to the Quimby Act. The Quimby Act is applicable to subdivision maps, large developments. That's based on a formulas that's built in the Quimby regulations and legislation. This parkland improvement, parkland acquisition fee is for the development of what I call onesie-twosies lots, which are just either owner-occupied or single individual lots that are being developed for commercial or residential reasons. This fee is only for residential, so it's only applicable to non-map development. So it's not going to be, it's not going to affect the big developer at all because they're under the Quimby Act legislation. So this, this basically makes it a level playing field whether you're building a, a single-family house or you're building a house as part of a 15-unit subdivision. Those, both will have relatively the same amount of fees charged to them, so. And the Quimby Act has a whole different level of requirements, but we're not really talking about that right now. So whether we limit this or suspend this, it's not going to affect our ability to collect or not collect the Quimby fees on developments. And bigger developments always have the option to build a park in lieu of payment. Briar Creek actually built us a park and gave it to us, and that was their contribution. They, they aren't charged the parkland fee or the Quimby fees, because that park is already there.
I think maybe what we would want to look at with regard to council member Starbuck's point, with regard to the traffic impact fee, is maybe take a little look and see, after the changes in the projects that we have, what portion of it we really should be collecting going forward, because obviously this council, without me, decided to discontinue the Central Avenue extension. And so to continue to collect money for that probably isn't very legitimate. But certainly, the intersections on the north end of H Street have impact issues and are going to require some work. And to council member Starbuck's point, at some point, we're going to have to get another north-south collector, and V Street is the obvious choice because we own the right-of-way already, and then we could quit maintaining the right-of-way. So it has a lot of, a lot of positive things. And I don't really want to, you know, we, we made an agreement among ourselves, we weren't going to start any more projects right now, so maybe that was something after the first of the year, we could bring that, bring that along. Just for the folks at home, just so everybody understands, this is, this is the capital improvement plan, and it is a 63-page document. And this is the impact fee study, and they're, they're numbered by chapter, but it looks like to be about 120 pages. So both of these are fairly substantial undertakings, and the steps are, we finish the general plan in November, and then the staff would begin looking at the capital improvement plan next year, be going down that road. Because the one we have now expires in 2017, so by the end of this budget cycle, we would want to be getting down that road. Are there any other questions for Brad at this time? Okay. Let's open it up for public comment. Anybody out there want to talk about these marvelous things? There's five of you, none of you are standing up. Okay. Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication, we'll come. Yeah. And they're all smiling. They know there's more cookies at the next break. Thanks, Wiki. Is there, do we, we don't need to take an action on your, your second half, do we? That was. That was information.
Basically for discussion, yeah.
Okay.
Just so you have it, I just calculated it out. The portion of the street improvement fee that is attributable to the river crossing is about eighteen percent of the total fee, and that just gives you an idea of what the rest of it is for.
Okay. Now, I guess maybe I'm confused about one thing. So a project was entitled at some point in the past when the fee was in place, but in the meantime, we suspended it, and then if we put it back, is the project that was entitled when it was in place the first time liable to pay it, or is it only a project going forward from the time we reinstated? Because when, when the project was approved, the fee was in place, then subsequently, we rescinded the fee, and then we're going to put it back. So where does that play in the big scheme of things?
If a project went forward while the fee was suspended, that project doesn't have to pay.
Okay, but if the project was, and all these are projects were approved back in '06, '07, '08, when the fee was in place, right now, they wouldn't pay it, but if we reinstated it, they would pay it, because it was in place when they started.
Projects that were approved and have already been built, or projects that were approved but haven't come forward for a billing permit?
They were approved but have not come forward for a billing permit, but the fee was in place when they were approved.
If the fee is still suspended, they won't pay it.
But if we reinstated it, then they will pay it?
As any new develop, as any new permit coming in would, yes.
Because it was in place when they came through the first time?
Right.
Okay, got it. There's a simple answer. Councilmember Starbucks?
Well, I'm going to throw it out on the table. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we reinstate the street impact fee upon adoption of the circul, el, circulation element on phase one of the general plan, or?
Through the mayor, the motion would be to bring back to the council discussion.
To the council?
Yeah.
I hate discussions. Okay.
No, I'll second. I think you need to reclarify your motion, so that everybody understands it.
Whenever I'm allowed, I'd like to reinstate the street impact fee upon adoption of phase one of the general plan, the circulation element.
You can't make that motion, he just told you.
I know, but that's exactly what we're going to do, but we're going through the mayor.
Okay, well, we're going to, so let me try for a motion. Motion would be that, upon approval of the traffic impact fee, the council would consider lifting the suspension of the fee, all or in part. Does that work for you? Don't say it until somebody says second, because then I'm going to pass the ball to the next person who wants to take a crack at this. Anybody want to say second?
Second.
Okay. Now go ahead and say it.
Mary Lynn, I'm not sure even that came out correctly, because you didn't reference the circulation element, which is, I think that's essentially all we're asking to do is to bring back discussion of the circulation element to include a portion of the reinstatement as a potential option.
Okay.
No, circulation element's done. It's not adopted.
Right. So when it comes back for adoption, to include that as a portion of discussion at that time?
That's what I think I said.
Well, yeah, but is it going to confuse the general plan with impact fees at that point?
No, it would be, once the general plan is passed, and that is passed, then the whole item would come back to us for review. The impact fee would come back to us for review, once those things were completed.
Ms. Bries, looks like she has a question.
Uh, the resolution that suspended at the second resolution, actually, that's the language in the resolution, that following adoption of the circulation element, the council will reconsider?
Good, we don't have to do anything, it's already done. We were really smart. Okay, I take back my motion, you take back your second, and we've already got it done. Good?
I'm okay with that, and I don't suppose I'll garner any support with the waiving of the park land acquisition fee then.
No, not so much.
Yeah. Some of the discussion that I had today with staff was just the idea generally of promoting development in the downtown area specifically by waiving as many fees as seemed feasible for just the downtown area, but I don't know if that was a feasible option.
If we're going to discuss that, Councilmember Starbucks would have to lead the dais.
Oh, for not.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd also like to point out that the park impact fee only applies to housing development, whereas the traffic impact fee applies to all development.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? No, it's not quite time for another cookie, I'll have to do a little more work. Okay, and now, new business. The City of Lompoc Fiscal Year 2012-13 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, alias the CAPER, and every time somebody says that, I think of an old gangster movie. Hey, man, what's the caper?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, the CAPER is the annual report on financial status of the Fund 43 program income of our CDBG program. That portion is just Fund 43 for the city, uh, program income and local human service funds. The Fund 44 funds allotted to the CDBG program through the consortium with the county, um, those funds are reported in the Santa Barbara County Consortium CAPER, and, as well as the home funds. This type of project includes the civic auditorium improvements, Catholic charities, of the mobile home emergency repair grant program, Mark's House lead, lead abatement and repainting project, uh, human service program recipients, which include Lompoc Emergency Shelter, Domestic Violence Solutions, the 2011 helpline, and the North County Crisis Center. The format of the CAPER is prescribed by HUD, and it is a standardized, uh, format, which is utilized nationally. The report specifically is for activities during the program year of 2012, which is also known as Fiscal Year 2012-2013, when you look at the report. The fiscal year ends on June 30th, and the CAPER is due ninety days later. The, um, challenge is that reporting of federal expenditures is not finalled until the annual Office of Management and Budget 133 report, which is due March 31st of 2014, or nine months following the CAPER. Also, the city fiscal audit, which is not scheduled to begin until October the 20th, has a report due the, by December 30th of 2013. So when we're attempting to put the report together, working with finance, we are working, um, against getting numbers, hopefully, uh, all the time we're writing the narratives, we're still waiting for numbers to be final, and even when we get final numbers, they're not a hundred percent final, perhaps. But they are final in that snapshot, to the best of our knowledge. The review of the CAPER must include a public participation period, and we have our public participation period noticed from September the 12th through the 27th. Any comments that the city receives will be included in the final report, which is transmitted to HUD by September 30th. The executive summary highlights the Lompoc 2012-13 project accomplishments. These accomplishments are generally reported by the agencies. Under general questions, there's a self-evaluation area, which is on page 10 of the CAPER, where the city's monitoring of program is detailed, although the policy on monitoring has not been adopted yet, or brought to the council yet. Limited resources, changes in staffing, and federal deadlines can pull, combined to result in the CAPER being presented to the council with limited opportunities for changes. That being said, the document is a draft, and if there's specific language changes the council would like to see, we can certainly make those prior to final submission of the document. I'd just like to note that both the city and the Santa Barbara County documents are available on the city website for the public to review and comment on. And, um, with that, if there's any specific questions, staff is avail, available to answer them. Mr. Wilkie and Ms. Galavan have all worked on this as well, so it's kind of a team effort, and we're happy to try and answer whatever questions the council may have.
Are there any questions before I open the public hearing? Councilmember Starbucks?
Just really quickly, one of them I wanted to ask is, on the CAPER, we report on the city's economic and community development staff assisted? Is that just something we put in, or is this part of the format that HUD requires? An example being, just right on the opening page here, the opening of eight new businesses, which represent approximately 228 local and full-time part-time jobs. Is that part of CDBG and the HUD reporting, or are we, I'm just curious on that.
There is an, a section of, um, through anti-poverty, that we are trying to create jobs through CDBG, so we address it in that manner. It's not because they were given a loan through CDBG or something like that, but we are just demonstrating to HUD that we do have an effort in our organization that is moving economic development and the creation of jobs forward.
So these eight new businesses didn't take any CDBG money, then?
That is correct.
The, the other question, uh, when we get right in, back in the anti-poverty, was what we had talked about the other day, our statement, "The city does not have a neighborhood revitalization strategy and was ineligible to receive neighbor, neighborhood stabilization program funds." We had talked about that, it was just, we've come up with a reason why we don't participate?
The neighborhood stabilization program was actually, uh, three phases of grants, one in 2008, one in 2009, and one in 2010, and those grants were based on foreclosure rates. So, um, it, it had to do with, the grants were given to communities that had the highest foreclosure rates, and that was what those grants specifically addressed, and, um, that's why it reflects we didn't qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Bries, just for confirmation, the information is available on the website, we encourage public comment. Public comments are then included in the final report that is submitted?
To HUD, yes, that's correct. They are part of the document.
Okay, thank you.
Just, one thing I think would be kind of important to bring out here also is, the last CAPER that we did, we referenced code enforcement quite a lot in it, is for self-monitoring and enforcement and redevelopment and all this, and in this one, there was very little mention of it, and we might want to explain why we are not bringing up code enforcement in this CAPER like we did in the past one.
We've been looking at, in this one, we were looking at Fund 43 specifically, that the program income and the use of that, and other funds would be reported through the county's CAPER. But there are some references, some worst-case scenarios, and other instances where we saw positive effects from the program, and our housing rehab loans, which are tied to our code enforcement effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment, anyone like to speak to us about this CAPER? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment, and we'll come back to the council. Now, are there any other questions for staff? Okay, who would like to make a motion? Councilmember Humble?
Oops, did it again. Um, I'll make the motion, but I want to make sure we make it right, so I'll just...
Move the staff recommendation, it's generally pretty safe.
And then let staff write up the motion, okay, yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, any last-minute discussions? Uh, Bobby, still have your light on, you want to discuss, or are you seconding? Okay. In that case, could we vote, please? That passes five-zero, thank you. Do we have any written communications? Nope. Is there anyone out there that would like to talk to us for two minutes on any subject? And, oh, nope, okay, we're, cookies are getting closer. Council requests comments and meeting reports, and we'll start from Bob, because you got his light on first.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the understanding that I do not expect these council requests to be brought forward until after our new city administrator is on board, I'd like to make two council requests. One is that we bring forward to the council discussion, for discussion, our Saturday swap meets. Um, I believe the last time this was brought before the city council was probably around 2004, there was a lot of discussion, there were some, uh, conditions put on the organizers, participants in the swap meet, and I am getting, and I, well, I'm getting many complaints from the community that these conditions are not being met. And I'm not even sure how, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how we are able to enforce some of the things in the, uh, in the conditions, in the agreement. For instance, how do we monitor whether sales tax are collected? How do we monitor the total sales? We're supposed to be getting a percentage of total sales. I have no idea. So I'd just like it be brought before us for discussion sometime after the new city administrator is brought forward, and I'll need two other approvals on this.
Couldn't we just kind of write those on a list, and then we'll, we'll bring them back then, so we're not kind of muddying up the water? I, I, I agree with you completely, you know, that needs to be looked at, but I really don't want to go down this road. You know, we agreed we're not going to put those...
We're not, we're not, we're not putting anything on the, uh, on our interim city administrator.
No, but we're putting something on someone that isn't even here yet, so...
Well, well, we're going to do it anyway.
If you can get two more people, I guess that's the answer.
I've been hearing a lot about it myself, and I, I do think that it's something we should put on a long future agenda.
And a third?
Yeah, I do too, because I've been talking about it for fifteen years, and I, I think it needs to be looked at very closely, but when we put it, I know we've got a lot of things on our table, but we don't want to lose that, this issue down the road.
Okay.
Okay, and then my next one, same conditions, sometime in the future. I'd like us to have a discussion brought forward and, and consider a license of, a license fee and permit for panhandlers in our city. Sometime in the future, discussion sometime after the... That's how I'd like to, I'd like to get two other...
I'd like to get the city attorney to speak to that issue, and see if that is a practical solution legally.
Um, there are certain restrictions on panhandling issues, and actually, we are currently researching what authority the city has to, to regulate panhandling, because a request that came through the police department, so I don't have more to say than that.
Can, can that discussion include the possibility of licensing them?
It can include whatever the council wants it to include.
Okay, so that's what I'd like to see then, so. Yeah, so I guess, when, when the police department is done, maybe just bring the status report, or report back to the city council then. Okay, that's what I'd like to request.
Well, I think they'll just do that, since they have to have us take an action. No, they won't.
You don't need to take an action.
No, I'm saying, the police will just bring it to us, because they would need us if they want to take an action.
Correct.
Okay, so it's going to come to us. Okay, anything else you want to report, Bob? Okay?
Oh, I have nothing to report right now.
Uh, Dwayne?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was able to go up to St. Mary's Church on Friday the 13th, uh, first responders, and it's a very good program, and a lot of the agency fire, police and fire, Vandenberg, Lompoc, and all around, was there in a very good program, so, uh, they, and I guess they do it every year, and I was real pleased to be there.
Councilmember Costa?
And then tomorrow, I'm leaving for Sacramento.
Yep. Councilmember Costa?
Uh, thank you, Mary Lynn. Um, I don't know if we should say it now, or when we return, uh, Councilmember Lingle, but we will be also at city expense traveling next week for an NCPA conference, we can say when we come back. Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention was what Ms. Barcelona spoke of earlier, and that is the Fire Department Open House. Um, I really encourage you to be there, everyone. It was a fantastic event last year, they had over a thousand people turn out, um, and there is, what wasn't... what wasn't mentioned is, the kids, all the children who are present will be able to go through stations while they're, they'll learn safety about certain things, bike safety and emergency preparedness safety, and they learn all these different things, and they'll get checkmarks. And at the end, when they're leaving, they get this really huge orange Home Depot bucket full of free stuff, including a free bike helmet and all kinds of other really cool free stuff. So, what's that? Yeah, no, I mean, there's probably gonna be some leftovers for adults, too, so we really encourage you, anybody of all ages, youth or not, to really please come out, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM October 5th, which is a Saturday, just around the corner here on G Street, Fire Station 1.
It was my pleasure to attend a veterans event put on by Congresswoman Capes. She did it, one here in Lompoc, and then I think the next one was in Atascadero, to connect veterans with services, so we thank Congresswoman Capes for that and coming to visit us. And then we had our, our monthly mayor's luncheon, and I think the, the point I wanna make about that is, all the mayors bring their collective ideas there, and we all sponge something good off the other one. So that was outstanding. I had a meeting the other day with Chris Zaccakis, who owns Lompoc Honda and our new Chrysler dealership, and he's doing well and ecstatic about the service he received from the city. And the Chrysler Corporation actually wrote us a letter and told us how good we were, so we'll be sharing that with future economic development prospects. Last week, and Councilmember Homdall attended too, we attended a briefing from the Pacific Legal Foundation in Santa Maria with regard to AB 32, the greenhouse gas initiative, and their challenge to that. What I learned from that, that I didn't know, is when AB 32 passed the legislature, the sponsor of the bill sent a letter to all the legislators and said there would never be any fees other than just the cost of administration. So the whole carbon credit thing that California Air Resources Board did was done really without the legislature's intent, and so that's in court and has a fairly good chance of being overturned. And next year, that'll probably start costing us all about 20 cents a gallon on our gasoline and 10% more on our electric, so it's pretty important. A really exciting thing, I met with Elizabeth, can't think of her last name, from the Petroleum Education Council last Tuesday evening, and she talked to me at great length about the potential for the Hancock Police and Fire Facility. And in her, her role with the petroleum, with her previous employer, with Texas A&amp;M University, she actually helped a junior college in New Mexico put in an oil industry fire safety and firefighting training facility that was funded with over $20 million from BP. So we're hoping that she can bring some of that skill to us, and I've asked her to tell us what that would cost. She is currently working with Hancock College on signing the agreement to do, provide all of materials for the oil industry safety training, and they have formed a group in Santa Maria of oil industry folks to bring this forward. And then last week, we had the ribbon cutting at Walmart, and several city entities received nice checks from Walmart, thanks for that. And then we also had the luncheon at the prison, and one of the things the warden asked to share was that if there is a nonprofit group in Lompoc that is working on a project, a defined project, and they need labor for it, there are low-security-risk trustees available, and they have a program to provide that labor, and I've shared that with the school district and also with some departments here in the city. Councilmember Starbucks and I attended the joint meeting of the Parks and Recreation and the Beautification Commission. I think a lot of things were, were shared there going forward, and it looks like there's a lot of, lot of things going forward with that. And then Councilmember Lingal and I met with the planner for the new fire station last week, as did the other council members, talking about, you know, where we're going in terms of our fire master plan in the Lompoc Valley. And then we were, we were both at the First Responders Lunch, that was, we all went to Bob's house for the, for the party, for his retirement, that was pretty exciting. Yesterday, we had a demonstration from one of the automated pothole patching machines here in the city, showing us what they could do. And today was another SB CAG Day, so they came to talk about how we can improve transportation in northern Santa Barbara County. And you, if you kept tuned in on that, there was a lot of discussion about, at the SB CAG Board with regard to whether it would be consolidation or improvement. And the board voted that it would be improvement, not consolidation, so that we retain our local control of our transportation. So all good things there, and he's a very nice gentleman, and our city administrator, and the city administrator from, was it Santa Maria? And Solbang, they participated in the selection of this consultant specifically to approach it from the right direction, so it would be a useful thing. So, that's my report. The Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting, unless we have a closed session, at 7 o'clock PM on October 1st. We'll see you next month.